Good evening. Tonight is the January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the first meeting of the new year. We are at Franklin Delano Roosevelt High School. I may have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person or persons, please.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much for now in executive session. Stand up here. Thank you for being patient. We're ready to roll now. May I have a motion to return to the general session, please?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. At this time, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe there are no additions to the, or modifications to the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight, please?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. That brings us to Pride. You want to start us off with the lengthy Pride? Or unlengthy?
Okay. Good evening. We have some formal Pride scheduled for this evening, but I'd like to begin with some informal Pride. First, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to attend the first Katie Philiberty Memorial Tournament, gymnastics tournament. It was incredible. It was well-attended, extremely well-organized, and they were able to raise twenty-one hundred dollars for the scholarship fund. So, thank you to the gymnastics coaches and the team and everybody who came out to support the team for participating in this fundraiser. As everyone knows, gymnastics is near and dear to my heart, so it was just an incredible We have a middle school student who took first place. Oh, I did have, Poughkeepsie Journal did a really nice feature article on the Katie Philiberty Tournament, so we're happy to get the coverage. Gymnastics rarely gets a full page, just saying. We had a middle school student who took first place in the Grace Smith House Art Show, and it's called "The Peace Group at the Grace Smith House," and it held its fifth annual "Love Shouldn't Hurt" art contest. So, congratulations to Alexis Caheida, I might have mispronounced that, at Havilland Middle School, who took first place. So that was a great community involvement. I want to acknowledge, we don't normally do during Pride something that is State Education Department-run or involvement, but we are incredibly proud of our Food Services Department. And I know our director, who is relatively new, Lauren, stand up for a second. Stand up and wave so everybody can see you. That's Lauren. We had our state audit for our Food Services Department, and state auditors almost never use the type of words and language that they used about our Food Services Department. I'm going to turn it over to Linda Steinberg. The day they came in and they spent an entire day random. They chose two of our kitchens. They stood behind the people the entire day. So, when Linda and I heard the good news, we both went to Ralph R. Smith and Havilland Middle School to congratulate them. But congratulations, Lauren. It was an unbelievable report. So Linda, could you tell us a little bit about that audit? A scary audit?
Yeah. They were here on January sixth, and at the end of the day, they called me to Lauren's office for an exit interview. The first thing they talked about was their clerical review. They reviewed most all of the paperwork that Lauren and Linda Fadden have to process in their office. They reviewed the free and reduced lunch applications, the way that we verify the information, how it's filed. They looked at production reports. That's when they used the word "awesome." They loved the reports. They said that every school should use, should prepare them the way we do. They didn't find any findings. There was a few small suggestions. Some of our wording was outdated, but no findings at all. So, then when they were at the schools, they noticed that the food service workers and the cooks were actually using the production records as a live document, and that's the intent, and that's something that they don't normally see in any other school district. So they were really impressed with that. They could tell that we do that regularly, because there's no way we could have just put that into practice for the day that they were there for their audit, because the women that were using the reports knew exactly what they were doing and how to use them. They actually stood over, or stood behind everybody as they were working in the kitchens. I can't imagine how nerve-wracking that would be. But they, they watched everything they did, took notes the whole time, and said it was, they were really impressed with the service, the way that the ladies interacted with the students, just everything was, was really nice and awesome.
Awesome, yeah. And it's so rare that we have an audit from State Education Department on anything that we would actually put it under the Pride section of our, not that we do things incorrectly, but they don't normally offer that much praise, and it was obviously well-deserved, so thank you. I know Garrett has some pride, but before I turn it over to our student board member, I want to talk about how proud I was to see Garrett in his president's role. As I attended the SGO meeting, Garrett is the president of the SGO. Between Garrett, Alex Pasekis, Zach Schiffer, and Joey, how do you say, Joey Calazo. These four gentlemen, and certainly Garrett was the president, ran one of the most incredibly well-organized meetings that I've seen in a long time in a student body. They ensured that every single person in the room participated, and I drove out of the parking lot that day thinking, if this is the representative of our finest, we're in good shape and very proud of you.
Thank you.
And then, so we'll turn it over to Garrett, and then you guys-
Now, a few additional remarks on the subject of the Pride. I don't want to steal too much of Mr. Partey's thunder. I'm sure he'll mention some of this stuff later. So, there's been a small relative lull in the sports with the holiday break, but I know our basketball teams and our track team are back at it again. Many of our spring sports teams have already begun their winter training ahead of time to get a jump start on that. And, a few upcoming things that I think are worth noting is that there's a Prism concert coming up on the twenty-sixth, so I'd encourage as many people as possible to attend that. Recently, Bosse's came in and did an assembly for our 10th graders. That's a very valuable program, and I remember hearing about, when I was a 10th grader, and how significant I found the program then. And recently, the student government distributed snacks and drinks to the students who were studying for the Regents. We have this great program going on right now in the high school where the students can get extra Regents help for these, for the upcoming Regents in two weeks from now. So, we want to give the reward for those students who wanted to put in the extra work.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, it seems Garrett forgot one thing. Garrett was recognized as a Poughkeepsie Journal All-Star for runners in the Boys Cross Country, and as well, Sarah Trainer, an eighth grader, was also recognized in Girls Cross Country, so. So you missed a couple.
I saw, I thought I saw-
And if you keep making, and if you keep running meetings so well and make me look so bad, that, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to have you sitting over here.
All right.
Okay.
There's one other Poughkeepsie Journal All-Star recognized, and that's Pat Peyton Sorcy on the football team.
Oh, true.
And I also believe there is Emma Reining for swimming was also one of those students, and Jess Schrodel for tennis. I think there's a few more in there.
Excellent.
So we had a good showing in the Poughkeepsie Journal this year.
That's great.
All right. Thanks. Okay. At this time, we would like to bring up one of our formal Pride recipients, and that is an exchange student, Brice Phoenix. And he is here with Debbie Saint Ange as his host family, and so we will invite you to the podium to talk, Brice was willing to come in and talk about his experiences here as an exchange student from Switzerland.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for the invitation. I don't know. I can begin maybe first by why I came here and why I came here. So I chose to came, first it was in an English country, English-speaking country, and finally it was the US, because I really wanted to improve my English, because with the world we live right now, it's really important to know English. And I came here in the US. I came with an association called YFU. There is some pamphlets on the table just if you are interested in. So it's an association who sends students from every country, in every other country, most of the country in the world. Sorry.
That's okay.
I think I can speak about my first impression when I arrived there. So first, you arrive in a foreign country, it's really difficult, because nobody speaks your language, and you are a little bit lost. Especially the first week, everybody knew I was a new student, and everybody spoke to me, and most of the time, there was a group of people speaking to me, and all the groups speaking at the same time. So you don't understand really English, and there is all these people speaking at you. You are just like, please, can you take a moment, slow down, and speak one after each other, please? And there is also the school who is really different from what I'm used to in Switzerland. The school here has so many rules comparing to ours in Switzerland. It's really crazy, really. Just to give one example, during the morning, when all the buses are coming and all the buses wait, the front of the school, and they wait, all the buses are there to let the students go out of the bus, and you wait, you wait, you wait. And we are really not used to that, in Europe in general. And there is also, the most cultural stuff are the same. We share a lot in common, but there is some other stuff who are really surprising. Just to give one example, right now, you just played allegiance to your flag. Just before this meeting, you will never see that in any other country in the world, I think. In Europe, I'm sure not. In other places, I'm not sure, but it's really surprising for you. And for me, it was every morning, everybody stand and play allegiance. And for us, we are not used to that. It's really crazy for, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you, and thank you for sharing. I don't know if you had more, but we have a certificate for you for being brave enough to come and speak in English and share your experiences. And for those of you who did not hear, he's with the organization Youth for Understanding, and it is an incredible program, and I believe it is the first time we have had a foreign exchange student through that program. So, welcome. We're happy to have you, and thank you for sharing your experiences. Thank you. Okay. The next portion of our formal Pride, we are extremely proud to have in our midst another Eagle Scout. And so first and foremost to Lucas Carey, congratulations on your achievement. Knowing what goes into the process, we know that it's no small feat, and not only did you get your Eagle Scout designation, but the project that you worked on contributed to our community. We have pictures of the Hyde Park Field that you replaced the fence. I can pass these around up here. We have the before and after pictures. So your contribution really improved one of our athletic facilities, and will be up there for a real long time, and we promise to maintain it so that every time you come back, it will be at the same level of, you know, condition, excellent condition that you presented. If you see the before and after, it's a significant difference. So, Lucas and-
Can I just say a couple of words? First of all, congratulations. It's a big deal. My, my son is an Eagle Scout. And I want you to know, in anything you do, no matter what you apply for, you always put that Eagle Scout first.
Yeah, that's right.
It really makes the difference. So, congratulations again.
We have a certificate for you. So I can pass these around. They're attached to the agenda. Oh, they're attached. Everybody has them. Yeah, beautiful. Thank you so much. Do you want to say a few words? Okay.
Well, did you run out of things to say yet?
I wish. Just a reminder that tomorrow is a half-day for students, for the staff has professional development. We received good news today in state aid, so as we approached the budget season, it was wonderful to hear, Linda, was it 1.2?
Yes, 1.2 million.
1.2 million increase in state aid for next year will certainly make the budget process less painful.
Right. We're going to double the board salaries.
And last but not least, we are the recipient this year for the Claudio Cares Foundation. The Claudio Cares Foundation has a Snowflake Gala every year. I believe this year, it's Friday, February sixth.
Fifth.
Fifth. Friday, February fifth. I know myself and my husband and several other people in the, in our administrative team, and even some of our teachers will be attending the gala, and this year, we are the recipient of their fundraising, and they will be making a donation for a computer lab, a Mac lab at FDR High School. So, if you haven't bought tickets to the gala and you'd like to support the foundation, I know Garrett's very much, are you going to be a waiter?
I unfortunately will have a track meet that day, but I know many of my fellow seniors are going to be eager servers to anyone that would like to attend.
Great.
I can assure a top-notch service.
It's a wonderful event. I've gone, this is the third, and I have gone every year, so I look forward to that, and we would really sincerely like to thank the Claudio Cares Foundation for choosing us as the recipient for their donation this year.
Okay. But you don't get to stop unless you have nothing for superintendent's report.
That was superintendent's report.
Oh, that was superintendent's-
Oh, sorry, I moved on.
All right, all right. That's good.
I think we're going to have to amend the agenda.
Moving on is good. That brings us to the star presentation of the evening by Mr. Rick Partey, FDR. And may I say that you should be busting your butt with that graduation rate increase.
Well, we're going to get to that. I'm very excited about that. Want to make sure I can get this to go the way I want it to go.
Is it turned on?
That's the key.
Ooh.
Coming. That was a quick presentation.
All right. Just push another button. There you go.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Great. Members of our community, thank you for being here. Members of our board, our superintendents, our assistant superintendents, district administrators. Garrett?
Thank you.
Our great students. On behalf of our great students and our staff, our dedicated staff, and our outstanding APs that we have here, I am honored to welcome all of you folks here to the high school. We appreciate the board's dedication and effort on behalf of our students. I know that you were very kind, Mr. Heater, that you were going to double your salary that you don't receive, but the time and the effort that all of you folks put in, I can't, I can imagine, and it's significant, and the fact that you do it only for our students and only for our community is really admirable, and I want to thank you for that. So on behalf of all of our students and our staff, thank you and welcome. As you look at our, obviously, you can take a look at the district mission, which is so important to us, our building mission, which is so important to us as well, but when you look at our goal at the bottom, I can, two of FDR's four freedoms come to mind. Particularly freedom from want, particularly freedom from fear. It's critical, the work that we do here, to ensure that our students have an opportunity to move into the second phases of their lives, and that we support them so that they can move forward with that. It's with that in mind that we set our goal, our primary goal, and that goal is to each year graduate more students. Because if our students don't graduate, if they can't reach higher, if they can't get better, they're going to be in a deficit in terms of reaching two of those four freedoms. And that's our critical goal, to do that. We address it at meetings. We believe for us, it's incredibly important that we have a singular vision, and that everyone knows it, and that everyone can understand it. We don't want to lose our purpose. We don't want to get confused of our purpose. It's posted throughout the building. Every faculty meeting starts quarterly with me asking our faculty, what is our goal? They continue to respond, and it keeps it in the front of their mind. Our conversations frequently, when they need something from me, or they want something from me, when they say, they'll come to me, they'll say, if our goal is to graduate more students. And that's the way to start every conversation at FDR, as far as I'm concerned. Presentations around the building, and I talk about it with our students. APs, if you could hand out the new information we just got from the state of New York. Ladies and gentlemen, I am very fortunate to have a dedicated and committed faculty, staff, and this group of APs is truly superior. If we take a look at where we're at right now, what you're looking at right now is the comparison between the 2010 cohort and the 2011 cohort. Ladies and gentlemen, just so you're aware in the crowd, the state of New York doesn't track class graduation rates. It tracks cohorts. A cohort starts when a group of students comes into the high school. So the class of 2014's cohort was 2010. Last year's class of 2015's cohort is 2011. There was a nice story in the Poughkeepsie Journal the other day where they talked about our June cohort rate. Unfortunately, our June cohort rate was misrepresented. It was put in as seventy-eight. It was actually seventy-nine. But when they track a high school, they track their overall graduation rate for that cohort, and that includes August. The 2010 cohort's graduation rate was seventy-six in August. The 2011's was eighty-one percent. That's a significant jump. A significant jump. Students with disabilities traditionally were graduating at thirty-six percent. Last year, they graduated with sixty-one point seven percent. Again, incredible jump. Ninety-three percent of our graduates last year received Regents diplomas. Seven percent of our students graduated with a local diploma. We're reaching higher for our students. We're not setting a bar that's low. We're trying to get as high as we can. We're also seeing thirty-eight percent of our graduates received a Regents diploma with advanced designation, which is the higher level of Regents diploma. So again, you're seeing that elevated. There's no doubt that we couldn't have reached these numbers without outstanding help from our elementary schools that prepared these students, our district staff that worked so hard. This was a total team effort to get to this spot. It took our faculty, it took our parents, it took our community, and it took our students pushing each other. Garrett will tell you, he talked about, you know, working with, with our students in Regents prep. Our students pushed our own students, and that was part of what we needed to see happen. And that's where a building will start to go in an exceptionally positive direction. But again, it wasn't just the high school. It was the community. It was the elementary schools. It was our faculty. It was all of our staff. I'm very proud of what we were able to do there. FDR's data overall, I think this is important, and we want to, want you to see this. Eighty-six percent of our students scored threes and fours. The state average was seventy-eight, excuse me, threes and fours. Our students were over the state average. All right? We were seventy-eight a year ago. Math, ninety-two percent of our students scored threes and fours. Eighty-six percent was the state line. So again, in math, in that cohort, we were substantially higher than the state average. We were also up from eighty-four. You're seeing climbing there. An area that we have to focus on, and an area where we're going to be allotting more resources and more time and more effort, will be global. Global is difficult throughout the state. You see that seventy-seven percent of our students were threes and fours. State average was seventy-nine. We moved up, but it's not enough. We want to continue to move up. We want to surpass the state average. Global is a little different than some of our other classes and some of our other Regents exam, because it covers two years. All right? And that's, that's, it's difficult statewide, but it's something that we're going to attack harder this year. US, eighty percent of our students, threes and fours. Again, we narrowed the edge. We were up from seventy-three percent, which that was a significant jump. Again, we're not happy moving up. We want to surpass and be better. Science, again, eighty-six, over the state average of eighty-four, and eighty-one percent of our students the year before. And again, this is a result of certainly a great group of students, teachers working, doing what they need to do. We don't want to stop, academics is part of the, part of what we do here, but a big part- We don't want to stop, academics is part of what we do here, but a big part of what we do is social, all right, it's cultural. What we're trying to do is be able to make sure that we're not only turning out smart, intelligent students, but we're also turning out great community members, and that's one of the areas that we've been working on this year. I think it's really important to see, last year during this time, we had 453 referrals, and what I'm talking about is from up until, I think we go to, I think it was January 10th or 11th, we ran this date, so from the beginning of the school year to January 10th. Last year during this time, we had 453 referrals for our students. This year, it's 160. I think there's a lot of reasons behind that, I know there's a lot of reasons. You folks were certainly kind enough and saw the foresight to be able to give us a third assistant principal. That makes a substantial difference. It makes a substantial difference. We're able to get, we've been getting out a positive message to our staff, a positive message to our students, and that's continuing. Now we're two classes in. That's starting to make a difference, all right? That piece, we talk about respect, we talk about being great, we talk about the expectation for our students to be great. We've talked to our staff about how we greet our students, we've talked to our staff about how we interact with our students. There's plenty of reasons to look to say no, but there's far more value in saying yes, meeting someone with a smile, and that's something that we work on very hard here. Some of the things that, you know, the positive message, the commitment of our staff to our goals, to understand that to have a student in your class is important. We've been working hard on cultural competence, understanding who our students are, understanding the differences in all of our different students, and I think that's caused our teachers to be able to look a little bit further and to think a little bit more. Differentiation, when a student is met at their level where they're at, they're less likely to want to disrupt. They know they're valued. When a student knows that they're valued in a classroom, they're more than, they're more interested in receiving from the individual, and that's a big part of what we're doing. We look at our data as well, and that data's being looked at. Are we getting to the students? If we're not getting to the students, we've got to find another way to get to the students, and when a kid, again, sits there and says, you know what, they're looking for a way to get to me, I can understand that now, there's less disengagement, and when there's less disengagement, what happens? More learning takes place. What happens after that? More students are engaged in what they're doing in the classroom, and they want to be there. And these are big parts of what we're doing, and they're a big piece to why we're where we're at. The academic supports that we've put in place are creation of an at-risk protocol. Why wait for someone to struggle? Let's identify students in advance. Our APs have poured over the at-risk data, so we've been able to look at our ninth grade students before they got here. Yes, they have a clean slate, yes, they can come in and achieve whatever they wish to do in high school, yes, this is an opportunity to reinvent themselves, but let's look at where they're at right now, where they came to us, what they might have had or struggled with in high school, and let's look at putting systems into place, whether it might be academic support service, whether it might be meetings or check-ins with assistant principals, counselors, or social workers, or school psychologists. All of those pieces come together so that these students are getting more help early on, particularly the ninth grade. And we talk about the issue with what we're trying to do right now, is we're always trying to boost the graduation rate. Well, right, the past two years, we've been working with the seniors. We can't forget the ninth graders. You have a sheet there that's with you, and the reason you have that sheet, .297, .292, excuse me, .292, what does that mean? .292 is what the value is of each one of, and again, when it gets into the math, what's the value of every one of our ninth graders towards getting a graduation rate of 100 percent? So that every one of those students in your class, if we want to get a graduation rate of 100 percent, yes, we do. So that means we've got to meet that .292. They're not a number, they're a person, but we have to identify the point of what that does for our graduation rate. How do you get 100 percent of our kids out? It's by starting and looking at the smallest numbers and working our way up. Academic intervention services, we've mentioned that. ELA, math, living environment, global, US history, writing across the contents. When we came in, there's so much data that tells us that writing across the contents helps our students to do better on tests, to be better critical thinkers, and to do better when they get out into the world. We also looked at what we did last year and the manner in which we did it last year, and it didn't fit this building as well as I would have liked it to fit. Any good instructor, any good teacher, any good leader is gonna look at what they're doing, they're gonna see if it's working, and if it isn't working, they're gonna be reflective and ask how to make it better. We did that with our faculty. We did that two or three times last year, and out of that came our, the FDR Critical Thinking and Writing Program. We still believe it's critical to write, we still believe it's critical to be, we think it's important to be a critical thinker, but the manner in which we did it is different now. We created buy-in, and the way we created buy-in, when it's done right, is, for example, tell me why, what these parentheses mean in this math equation. Write it. All of a sudden, you have student, and when a student has to put to writing what he's thinking or she's thinking, it gives us an understanding of how much they really know, because they have to critically think how, why, and why they're doing that, and that's a perfect example. Why is the music aligned that way? Why are the notes that way? Those are the things that we're starting to do now in our critical writing. It isn't a four-day span, it shouldn't be a four-day span. We did a writing piece in biology at the beginning of the year with our students, where they wrote about the scientific method. They didn't know they wrote. I asked one of the students, I said, how was your writing? They said, what do you mean? We didn't do it. Yeah, they did. They did, and it was excellent. Regents prep, we're working hard right now in Regents prep. I gotta see better numbers, we want to see better numbers, but we've got Regents prep there for our students. So many, what's the biggest factor that stops our students from graduating? It's the Regents exams, all right? So we're trying to do what we can to support our January Regents students with Regents prep. Targeted upperclassmen, summer school, what an outstanding thing. I'm so, we're so fortunate to have summer school here for our students, I don't know what we'd do without it. Our graduation rate, as you saw, jumped significantly as a result of summer school. Kids needed a little bit of extra time, they needed a little bit more work on our Regents. As you know, we went, as I put it up, we went from 79 to 81 percent. That's the number of students that were able to go to college, it's the number of students that were able to leave with a high school diploma, an important number. Thank you for summer school. Targeted AP and college credit courses, we're not trying to leave anybody behind, we want to make sure that we excel. I went to, I spoke with people at Arlington High School the other day, and everybody wanted to know where the APs were starting. Where do your APs start? Some, Arlington said, are starting global in 10th grade, and everybody went, wow. They got to me, and I said, are starting AP bio in 9th grade. They looked at me, really? Yeah, and they're doing really well. They're doing really well. So, yes, 14 AP classes, four DCC, six Maris, two SUNY Albany courses. We have a lot of opportunity for our students to reach higher and higher prior to graduating from this fine high school. Project Lead the Way, students can potentially earn up to 12 RPI credits, excuse me, RIT. We were talking about RIT earlier. Gradpoint ediscire, helping our students for credit recovery in Regents prep. Again, you see at the bottom, graduate more students. Data teamwork, we're looking at what we're doing. As you can tell, you can see by the numbers, we've got training again tomorrow. We're fortunate to have that, I think it makes a difference in what we're doing. PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. I met with two students today, anecdotally. They just walked into my office, they said, I want to meet with you, Mr. Party. I said, great, what do you want to meet about? They said, we want to meet about creating a PBIS program where our students go out, when they're in the hallway and they see something that's positive and supports PBIS, we want to take a picture of it, we want to create a website, and we want to move forward with it. It was students driving PBIS. It was students saying that we're gonna see positive. We talked it out, we're gonna work it out, all right? But it was our students wanting to advocate for themselves and working for them. I think that's part of why you see our numbers go down, and certainly the work of all of our staff. Cultural competence training, I can't stress that enough. I think that's helped us so much. When you start looking at where someone's coming from a financial deficit, or from a cultural or an ethnic background, you can now start to see common ground, and when we can see, it's part of why we have a student here from another country, to get to know more of the world, and know us, when we know more of the world, we can work with other people, value their cultures. Avid advancement through via individual determination, that's one of the things that's creeping through our building right now. We're spreading it, it's not where we want it to be yet, but we're gonna get, go further with that, and I can, I know we have the resources to work harder on that this summer. We'll have our fourth class, we'll have seniors in Avid this year, which I'm excited about. Certainly, the feeder coming out of the middle school is great. Common planning time is getting used more and more, there's more discussions there. I talked about writing across the contents. I think the expectations continue, and I don't think they do, I know they do, for the daily agenda in each classroom, we do that in our evaluation and observation of teachers. They form a strong support for our students. When they walk in the door, they know what's expected, they know why it's expected, and they know where they're gonna go, and for a student that needs that extra level, that extra support, that extra guidance, that's a good, great thing for them. Obviously, Project Lead the Way, which I've mentioned before. BLT, we reviewed our school comprehensive, our SEP, our School Comprehensive Education Plan, we did that. We're moving forward with DTSDE review. We're reviewing our building numbers, and thank you. Trying to speed you up, because I know I'm going too long here. Thank you, Dr. Recheck. Review building data, determine additional strategies to reduce our achievement gaps, which I think we're finding some good ideas there. Create a plan to implement strategies for the coming year, which we've already, you know, we've made some growth there. We've had a lot of people in the building, we've had a lot of interaction with a lot of different folks. You know, we've had folks come and speak from Daytop, recovering individuals to speak to our students in health. It's been substantial, PTSA is growing. Having the College Information Nights, the FAFSA Nights, we're gonna have another FAFSA night coming up very soon, where we're asking for folks to, one, fill out their FAFSA before, or not fill it out, but start the process, so that when we get here, we can get them to fill that out. I think it helps significantly for our folks. Obviously, Black History was a tremendous function last night. Last year, we were able to get a number of politicians in the building to support that. You know, our musicians, our choir, those folks get out, and they're in the community all the time, and they do a fantastic job representing this building and this district. We talked about Snowflake. FDR is gonna have its second Relay for Life. We had a number of people out here last year, we raised a lot of money for that. Was it $17,000?
Actually, we found out the final total was 20.
$20,000 was raised, and that's what a great facility to have our kids out there, our community out there, and to do that for Relay for Life. The mock DWI, I think, makes a huge impression on our students and brings in people from outside. Certainly, Officer Monaco is a tremendous resource for us. The concession and ticket booth, Cape works with our students that, you know, might have an issue and needs additional support and education. Grace Smith House did a sexting and cyberbullying assembly for all of our grade levels earlier in the year. Our alumni came in and did an excellent job speaking to our seniors. We're gonna try and move that down into our junior class for next year. And all the things that you see up there, the Giving Tree, two blood drives this year, one last year, forensic detectives, just a number of folks and a number of interaction. I'll tell you what, these kids are great. They achieve every day, they distinguish themselves every day. They represent this community in a significant manner. We've had some staff do the same thing. We've had a recent doctorate, we had a, one of our teachers was recognized as in the best of the Hudson Valley, the only teacher recognized in best of the Hudson Valley. I know you folks are aware of that. We had, the Christmas card was designed, art, excuse me, the holiday card was designed for Bosse's, went all over the county, it was one of our students that did it, represented Bosse's across the county. I'm kinda happy, well, not kind of happy, I'm certainly happy that I can stand here before you today and say, our kids are getting looked at at the very highest levels of colleges, Ivy League schools. We're fortunate enough to be able to announce, I have the permission to announce today, that one of our students, young man named Alex Basikas that you mentioned before, has been nominated, admitted, and making a decision whether or not he's gonna attend the United States Naval Academy. It's a tremendous opportunity for him, and we have other students that are certainly being looked at at that level as well. The links, we still go with the links, you see the links on our folks over there. We added the additional one, because we need to connect last year to this year. Class meetings, athletics, pep rallies, fall, homecomings, our kids are doing a great job. Again, another college national Hispanic scholar, a student being recognized nationally from here. Just a number of outstanding things. It's tremendous to see the track program growing, with cross-country distinguishing themselves as cross-country champions, girls and boys at Mills at home. There's just a lot of things that our students have done. I can go on and on and on. I'm not going to, but I would really like to. We're very proud of them, we're very proud of them. Ladies and gentlemen, is there any questions I can answer for you?
I think the first thing that I'd like to ask is about the graduation rate. So, I commend you and your staff and the student body on the advances that you've made there, but I would also point out that 80 percent are graduating, which means that one out of five aren't. What can you tell us about that one out of five?
As I said before, I think that's an excellent question, and I'll tell you that what ideally I'd like to see is 100, you know, we know that. When you look at the state breakdown, there's some of our students that come to our school with disabilities, that because of their disabilities, they are not going to qualify for a diploma. Last year, in our graduating class, there were four of those individuals. Some of those students still remain in our building, and some, whether they have an educational disability, or they're just behind. We have 27 of those students that are still enrolled in our building at this time. They're gonna have an opportunity to graduate in five years, or maybe four and a half, they could do that. They may take six years to graduate, but that doesn't mean we stop, that just means they're not counted in a four-year cohort. So there's 27 of those students still enrolled. There's two of those students that have left to go in a different way, to a different school, or a different educational philosophy. There's 32 that have dropped out. And I think when you break it down that way, you see that the number isn't just straight out, 20 didn't graduate, or 19 didn't graduate, but I also think that it goes back to what I said before about the at-risk protocols. When we start with ninth graders, and look at those ninth graders and see, why don't they graduate, or what do we need to do, that's where the cultural competence comes in. If you ask a student, people don't understand, and they answer, yeah, people don't understand me, well, you know, that's where you start to talk about cultural competence. When you talk about differentiation, maybe the student feels like they're lost in a classroom. That's why it's important to have training in those areas and pick those areas up. Maybe they're not getting to school on time. That's where we've moved in the right direction with, I think, with the third AP to address our attendance, be better there, so the student doesn't get behind. There are students that come to us, and it's, you know, that they'll come from another district, and we'll do what we can to remediate them, we'll give them ediscire, and we'll meet the issues that come to us. But when students do come in, some of them might have spent three years at a different school, they still count in our graduation rate. So we do what we can in terms of remediation. I think when you look at how we're working with our educational psychologists and the support that we're doing there, I think those are the pieces that, if you identify them in ninth grade, we have a shot at getting them through as seniors.
I have more questions, I just want to leave my colleagues' opportunity.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, another thing that I can't help but mention, that's an extraordinary change in the discipline referrals. So again, I want to commend you and your staff and the student body, and you've already spoken about the reasoning, or the reasons that you think that's taking place, but once again, you know, one of my top concerns as a board member is the safety of our students in our buildings, so I'm ecstatic about that kind of positive change.
Can I give an example of that? You know, because I didn't think I gave one before. We had an incident today, was it yesterday? It was yesterday. It was yesterday where two students had a problem. You know, it turned out to be three students that had a problem. It probably a year ago might have developed in It probably a year ago might have developed into a fight. This year, it didn't. There were three APs. There was the ability for one to do one job, one to do another job, and that third one to mediate. It's, you know, it's an increase of thirty-three percent of people that are dealing with our kids on a regular basis. They sat down, they talked it out, they worked it out. Everybody shook hands and walked out the door, and parents were called, and everybody felt like there was that level of connection that was made there. I think that when we have that level of support in place, I think that makes a substantial difference. I think if we were in a position last year with two, I don't know if we would have been able to go as far in-depth as the, what's the root cause of the issue between these three kids. We were able to do a really fine job as an administrator, getting to the bottom of that. And I think that, I think that makes a substantial difference in what we're looking at. I'm glad they're there.
It's good to hear.
Yeah.
So, at the risk of asking too many questions, what kind of work is done by the data team? What's the source materials, and what's their work product? What's their output?
The first piece is, the day-to-day teaching is a result of the data team. There isn't, we don't have a data team that says, "There's these fifteen people," or "data team people." What we have is, everyone in our building is part of data. The data teams function during common planning time. If you said to our algebra teachers, "Are they a data team?" No. Do they look at data almost daily? Yes. Because if we're not being reflective in what we're doing, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to empower the building to look at their data. And if we don't do that as examples, if we don't talk about data, if we don't hand them the .292, they don't get that we mean what we mean. I did an exit ticket with our faculty at the end of the faculty meeting. I asked a couple of questions. The next faculty meeting, they got the data right back at them. "This is what you said. This is why you said it. This is why I'm going to do this today." That's data. Inform your instruction, inform where we put our security guards, inform, you know, we've gotta look at everything that's data. Inform where we're putting our resources in terms of helping teachers certain. Does every teacher get trained the same way? No. There's certain teachers that aren't doing as well in that subject area. We've gotta address that. It's not that they're not doing a good job, it's that we've gotta help them do better. And that's the beauty of a data team. So, if I said to you, "What are they doing? What are the tangible results?" I would say, "Everything that we've done so far is a tangible result of our data teams." And I think, you know, it comes down to how much time we spend on each thing. If we're not informing any decision we make in the building with data, without data, we're not doing a good job at informing our decisions.
You're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Rick, on the building leadership team, how successful were you in getting parents involved and highly involved into your building leadership?
If I said, to me, highly involved would be, we'd have probably five or six or more. Right now, we're at two, and we're going, I think we're going to one. I think that's an area that we need to grow in, and I think it's an area we need to get better at. Thankfully, I have an excellent PTSA that's doing a great job at helping me inform my decisions. I have a lot of folks that come in the building, and they do a good job at letting me know what I can do better, and we're receptive to that. I mean, I don't, I think that we can do it once a month or twice a month, but on the other side of the coin, if we can't reach out to who we've got in the building, or who comes in the building to find out, we're struggling that way. I think we're doing a better job of that here.
All right. Any other questions?
I had one. For the FDR data, it's talking about students scoring threes and fours on these state tests. Are we talking about the regions tests?
Yes, sir.
Now, do students know what, I mean, you get a percentage back?
You get a number.
You get a...
Sixty-five, seventy-five, sixty-nine, ten.
Now, how do you know if you get a three or a four? Is there any way for students to know what they're getting? If this is the way we're determining how well students are doing, if they're getting threes and fours? Do students themselves know if they're getting threes and fours?
Dude, that's an excellent question. I'm not sure if they do. I think hopefully their guidance counselors will tell them. The result, the threes and fours, I think, are the indicator for the state to tell us whether or not they get two points or one point towards annual yearly progress.
Okay.
So, a two is certainly, you know, it gets us a pass, it gets us points, but it doesn't get us, it doesn't really get us much. All right? A pass is not what we want. We want the seventy, the high-level scores. We want the eighty-fives, the nineties. That's what we're trying to get. If you wanted to go down to your guidance counselor, you could ask him, "Do you get a, here's my score. Did I get a three or a four?" You can come to me, and I can tell you that.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Sorry to run long, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh, it was good data.
Well, I hope so. Thank you. It's always nice when they're going up.
So, that brings us to preliminary budget numbers. Something everybody would like to see, I'm sure. Which is good, why we're videotaping this, so people can see the numbers, because they look good.
Well, this, I don't know how to, it's not like centered.
Mike, can you help her?
Yeah.
If you hit the cameras or show button, it will take up the whole screen.
It's not showing the bottom.
Cutting off the last line.
Can you crank up the...
Move the projector.
If you pull it back, maybe.
Well, we only have one slide tonight, because we are just now collecting all the information that we need to prepare the budgets. I wanted to get an idea of how much we would hope receive in additional aid. That's why I prepared a preliminary budget. Unfortunately, as all of you know, now we have to calculate our tax levy first. In the past, that was always the plug number. It was always the number that we needed to balance the budget. But now, we have to first figure out what we can levy for taxes because of the cap, and then build the budget based on that. This is a little scary looking, like I said. Because the CPI is so low this year, it's very close to zero, we don't have the ability to raise taxes much for next year. I do expect the final number to be a little bit higher, because I haven't received the exclusions for the capital levy yet from our financial advisor. But as you can see here, right now, we can raise less than sixty-three thousand dollars. At the top, I calculated a rollover budget. With the bare bones budget, we still needed five-hundred-thirty-seven thousand to cover our contractual costs, and not have any increases in supplies or any other areas where we might need them. So, in total, that was looking like a four-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollar budget shortfall. I was a little worried about it, but luckily, today, we got the state aid runs. We're actually getting a lot more aid than I anticipated. We're getting an increase of one-point-two million. A large part of that is the gap elimination adjustment. We're getting back four-hundred-ninety-one thousand. So, at the next meeting, I'll have a more in-depth presentation. This is the information we have now.
Anybody have any questions?
We were distracted up here, as Dan said. We're getting our own money back, so.
Yes, yeah, you're right. It's not an increase. It's our own money. We're getting some of our own money. It's not all of it.
All right. Thank you, Linda.
Okay.
We look forward to the next installment.
Yes.
And that brings us to public participation. May I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Would anybody like to address the board? If so, please come up to the podium.
Very contentious in the evening.
May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And are you doing the district lead?
Board discussion. I can, we can do it together if you want.
Yeah. Well, you were at the meeting for yesterday, so you do.
You want me to start?
Yep.
Okay, so, wow, so we have lots of help at the table here. So, where we are, and Roger was with us yesterday for the first part of the meeting. Yesterday's coherence planning meeting was for the district staff to actually roll up our sleeves and do the gap analysis. So, to date, the coherence planning team, we broke into five separate groups, and we were each tasked with doing a data dive in the district to say, "If this is what our goal is and where we want to be, what are the potential gaps preventing us from getting there?" And so, well, that's bordering on the meeting you were at. So, do you want to describe what that process looked like, once we got together the five teams?
Well, the five teams, we all got together, and we evaluated, whether it was from the administration and the board, down to the building levels, and we were looking at how we are doing and how we're, and what we scored each other on. And for the most part, we scored us out of a possible four. We're on an average of two across the board. So, we saw lots of improvements we had to do. And then, we started, also started writing comments, and those are all put down, and we're waiting, and we'll come back for more information on that.
Oh, yeah, so, what the group has determined is that, the reason why we scored ourselves low, too, is we're talking about a complete refocus. So, instead of looking at compliance issues from the state education department, the thrust of the coherence planning team said, "We, early on, identified, what do we think are the skills that students need to be college and career ready?" And very quickly, we went through an exercise, and we landed on pretty much, what are the four Cs: critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity? So, we talked about, what would it look like if we organized ourselves around those skills as they permeate through all content areas? So, in order to structure ourselves for that kind of a focus, we really need to think differently. And so, the five teams identified the gaps between how we're organized as a compliance organization, to be compliant with all SED regulations, versus if we reorganize ourselves to be college and career ready under what we call the four Cs competencies. Again, the critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity. What does that mean, and how do we get there? So, we did the gap analysis. Our facilitator has put that into one document. And then, the instructional team got together this week, and our task was to say, "Let's prioritize how we address those gaps, and how do we narrow our focus?" And where we landed was, you can't possibly do all four Cs right off the bat and change the whole way you're focusing. So, where we landed, and what we'll talk about on February, the next February meeting, is, we'll share the gap analysis and our outline on how to get there. Everybody will still have plenty of time for input. But we did determine the other day that we're gonna organize ourselves as far as a roadmap, to begin with critical thinking. And we are part of a consortium, EdLeader 21, and through that organization, they actually have rubrics for the four Cs at benchmark levels. So, they have a grade three, four, a grade seven, eight, and a grade ten, eleven. So, what we'll be doing is organizing ourselves for rollout, to begin with critical thinking, and actually have a measurement that every single person in the district can use and say, "In my content area of art, how am I doing at the elementary level for implementing critical thinking?" And the same with seven, eight, or nine, ten. So, that way, you know, you talk about a single-focus goal of graduation rate. This will be a single-focus goal that ultimately, when we get there, every single lesson, everything that we do, will be initially started with, "How do I reach the goal of exemplary performance in critical thinking with this lesson?" So, that's very different than, "How do I get a hundred percent on the chemistry regions?" Or, "How do I get a hundred percent on this?" How do we get a hundred percent exemplary performance in the area of critical thinking in chemistry? And this is all research-based, and really exciting, and a new way of thinking, and a new way of really coming into coherence. And then, as we develop our roadmap, how we implement this, we'll come up with a way to incorporate all of the four Cs. So, according to, and thank you, Cora, for finding that little blurbs. When we were trying to debate on where to start, it's clear that critical thinking and communication were up there, but the research, Cora pulled out at the exact right moment, you know, really said, "All of them being equal, the most logical place to start is critical thinking." And then, it looks like we'll probably weave in the communication, collaboration, and creativity. And if you start with critical thinking, there will be a natural incorporation of collaboration and communication through critical thinking anyway. So, it does expedite the process of implementing the other four Cs. So, that's a little bit of where we are in space and time. We believe that we should be able to give the board a report at the end of February, present the coherence plan to the Board of Education by the end of February, early March. Perfect timing, because then we'll have our five-year building condition survey. And whether it's the facilities, technology, or budgeting, we will now be able to say, "Here is our strategic plan. We're calling it a coherence plan. Here is our coherence plan for the next five years for the district, and it'll be fluid and flexible. Let's plan our budget around it. Let's plan our capital projects around this, and how do we fully integrate digital learning through the lens of the four Cs?" So, how'd I do, guys? Any...
I do want to say, Rick, I notice you keep putting critical thinking in all your stuff. You did it last year, and you're doing it this year. You're almost, you're almost ahead of us, I think. So, I just wanted to point that out. But I would really like to encourage, we've seen the drop-off in the parents being involved in the committee, and we would really like to see the parents come to this next meeting, because this is, the parents are gonna say, "Yeah, they agree with this." So, if we can, just get the word to all our parents, and all the principals out there, to parent volunteers that come to the committee, just encourage them to come.
Yeah. We actually have eleven parent members on the committee, so we're gonna send out some extra special invitations to make sure that they get there. And our next meeting is an evening meeting, so we're really gonna make the major push. So, we have eleven parents signed up, eleven parents, seven community members, three students on the team, and three board members.
And Rick, your students were awesome at the last meeting we were at. They had a lot of great input they gave out.
Yeah, yeah. That's Kayla O'Grady, Joey.
Calizo.
Calizo. I don't know why I can't get that. It's not that hard. And Nate Craig.
Well, I guess I have to admit, I haven't been to the meetings lately, because I've been doing other things. But how does this mesh with the changes that are now being made with Common Core and academic standards? It seems like Common Core talked about critical thinking and all these other things. How is this going to be different, or is it gonna be meshed together, or, you know, how is that gonna work?
That's a very good question, and there's multiple questions there.
Yes.
So, the Common Core, critical thinking skills are embedded in most of the Common Core learning standards, if not all.
Right. Right.
What the shift is, that instead of being silos of content critical thinking, we're going to approach this from, critical thinking is the single most important factor for college and career readiness. And instead of looking for critical thinking in one specific Common Core content area, we are going to organize ourselves around Common Core, critical thinking, and then, you know, eventually the other four Cs as our vehicle for skill building. All of the content remains. So the Common Core learning standards are organized around content. We're going to organize ourselves around the skills in those content areas. I don't know if that...
And if we're looking that...
You mean cross-content?
Cross-content.
Cross-content.
Okay.
But we're also looking that standardized testing is still here. The Every Student Succeed Act still has standardized testing that we still have to give. So whether it's Common Core or not, we still have standardized tests. These four Cs, we believe, are what will help a student to not worry about each individual, but give them the skills to, just in general, to take any kind of test.
No, I understand that. It's just, how are you going to fit that into the everyday operation of the school? Where is that, where is that going to be? Is that between math and art?
It's embedded, and...
Yeah, but are they talking to each other?
Yeah, and that's the roadmap that needs to be developed. The strategic plan isn't going to have the roadmap set in February. That's the ongoing work. Cora, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, the only piece I would add is that, yes, the idea of critical thinking is embedded in all of the curriculum areas, including those that aren't specifically touched by Common Core. But one of the other things that the coherence plan will do is sort of rally all of the adult learning around that singular focus as well. So rather than our math colleagues talking about math Common Core and our English colleagues talking about English Common Core, all of them will be talking about critical thinking as it relates to their content. So the focus of the adult work also becomes much more narrowing collaborative.
What are we putting in place to make sure that everybody's definition of critical thinking is the same?
Right, so that's where the rubrics come in. The EdLeader 21 rubrics that are all research-based have very clear definitions and descriptors of what all of those four Cs look like. And then it's still conversation about...
Professional development?
Yes.
We'll have professional development based on that? Okay.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, so it's really a very powerful tool. If you think of every single teacher in every single content area in the high school will be able to use the same measurement instrument. This is what we have through EdLeader 21. And then they'll be able to calibrate. So I'm sitting there with the critical thinking rubric or the communication rubric, and I'm an art teacher. And I can say, this was the lesson I introduced and delivered, and this is the student work. According to this rubric, I rated it a three. And actually, usually what you do is you calibrate it by having everybody give it a rating, and then if there's discrepancies, focus on the language of the rubric that each teacher used to come up with that score. So it's a high level of collaboration when everybody's using the same measurement instrument so that they can consistently come up with a rating among themselves. It's going to take a couple of years to get there and a lot of professional development.
Okay, because you almost just described Common Core rubrics. They have the same kind of thing where there's a rubric for each thing. I just, I guess, I'll wait and see.
Okay.
I mean, I want, I don't want us to make the apparent mistakes that was made with Common Core rubrics that nobody seemed to have understood so that we don't get bogged down in criticisms by, you know, by the students and by the faculty or by the community members and parents. It's like Common Core got dragged down because initially, nobody understood it. And then when some people understood it, they understood it to be something they didn't want.
Yeah, no, I think we're going to find the reverse. Even the students on the team were, this makes perfect sense. This makes more sense than the Common Core.
Actually, the students were really on board with it. They were way behind it.
It's, yes, you'd have to see, I'd have to have a visual of the rubric up there, and then it would be more crystal clear because where they got into trouble with the Common Core learning standards was content-driven, not skill-driven.
Yeah, they were so concentrated on the module, do the module, each module along the way, instead of looking at the overall picture.
We'll catch up. And when we give the presentation, it'll be much more, it'll be clear. I hope. Now you have me worried.
No, just as long as there's, there is a means to translate that work to practical implementation.
It's a much easier road to look at it from this perspective and much more clear-cut and transparent than the Common Core implementation of the standards.
I know we have people that want to succeed, and I know we have administrators that want to succeed, and teachers that want to succeed. I want to make sure we give them something with which they can concede.
Yeah, we believe we have found it.
Okay.
I have a question regards to this. Will there be like specific assignments that will be this new critical thinking assignment? And then, or will this be attached to like already ongoing things? Or would this be fit more into the current curriculum?
It is a lens for looking at how lessons are designed and delivered.
It's not a content.
It's not a content. So it's a redesign. So when you go into your classroom right now, there's an objective on the board in hopefully most of your classrooms.
Right.
And the objective is usually something like the students will be able to, et cetera. I can't think of an objective or, you know, how, gain a better understanding of the civil war.
It's Pythagorean theorem or what have you. So will the teacher at the end of the day assign each student, like sit there at their desk and give each student an evaluation on this rubric on how well the student critically thought in that given assignment?
Oh, not, not on a daily basis, not, not, no, not on a daily basis. But it is a means for saying, at the outset of my lesson planning, I'm going to put the critical thinking or communication, let's not forget that there's going to be four Cs. I'm going to focus on one of these four Cs. And then, you know, certainly there will be times when the teacher will assess how well their students are doing on critical thinking. So let's say it's an essay that's assigned. And we're going to look at the essay from the perspective of critical thinking performance.
Right.
So it may be a different way of grading what students are doing that provides them feedback on how well did they communicate? What was their level of creativity or collaboration for this project? So it won't be for every single lesson per se that they get graded on it.
Okay, so this will be mainly targeted towards a project sort of thing?
It could be project, mhm. It could be project, it could be unit, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good, anyone else? Okay, so moving on, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. So may I have a motion for 10.1 consent agenda, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. That brings us down to 11.1. May I have a motion for special education placements, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that, Dan?
I have reviewed the packet presented to us from the special placements, and I recommend their adoption as presented in the package.
Thank you. All those in favor? Oppose? Thank you. May I have a motion for 11.2 agreement for special education services, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 11.3, a capital project change order, one of our unusual ones in that we're getting money back.
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 11.4 corrective action plan for the external audit.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Anybody on the audit committee?
Audit committee met last week, yeah, last week. And went over the corrective action plan, which was put together by Linda, and got a good plan put together. Really, there were minor issues, but obviously we have to, want to address them.
Right.
And so we recommend its adoption.
I just have one question. Item number two, the extra classroom activity funds. Just, it just kind of goes to question, do they really know what they were looking at?
I believe, oh, yeah.
Normally, when the auditors are here, they have an exit interview with us on their last day, and they bring up the issues that would be in the report. And this year, there was no exit interview. Before I knew it, they were just gone. And then when we got the draft report, I didn't realize, I didn't realize that wasn't a club until I talked to the extra classroom treasurer, and she explained to me it was part of another one. So I didn't catch it when I reviewed the draft report either.
It was kind of really a non-issue?
Yeah, I mean, it just...
But it looks funny, yes.
But we also discussed it, and I had said that, you know, if it was a really, I want to call it a sub-account, but if it was part of the student government account.
Yeah, SGO.
That they shouldn't be categorizing that separately. That student government treasurer, and that's their responsibility to kind of segregate funds. They shouldn't be doing that, you know, with the student, with the central treasurer because then it implies that it's a club that really isn't a club. So that, you know, that they should have just consolidated. It should be part of the student government funds, and it's up to the student government to keep their books straight, what they are.
So maybe it was more a matter of the way that it was presented and the way the auditor saw it that created the confusion. Okay.
I have yet to see a school district audit that doesn't say something about the smallest part of the overall budget, which is student activities.
Which we remind, why we have responsibility for making sure that something doesn't happen to those funds, it's not taxpayer money. It is student-raised funds and their responsibility to spend it, earn it. And we just have to make sure nobody's ripping it off.
Right.
Beyond that, it's not our money, and it's not taxpayer money. So that's the important point to note for the public that...
Yes, and there is, but there is something about the overall audit process and the glitch they get to every time they come to student activity funds. It doesn't jive. We have an $88 million budget, and our audit report says something doesn't jive in student activity. And it's not, it's not a, you know, as you said, it has nothing to do with taxpayer money. We're usually talking about $20 at the end of the day that should have been on this line, but it was on this line. And make sure you have it on this line instead of that line. So it's, I don't know, I'm convinced that they do student activity for comic relief at the end of an audit report. I'm just saying.
Probably some truth to that, yep. It's easy to kind of do.
Any other comments? All in favor? All in favor?
Fix that, Chris.
Oppose? Thank you. Well, it brings us back to public participation. May I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. We're now in public participation. I knew she couldn't stay down. I am so thankful that you are here.
I am just here to say thanks to Mr. Heater for volunteering to play...
Your name is?
Bobby Goodman. To play in our bad apples match against the Harlem Wizards here at FDR. I sent you all an email, you're all invited. We're going to be playing in the gym on February 29th at 7:00. Please, if any of you want to suit up, let me know. We have 25 staff members that are on the team and another 15 that are going to be on the cheer squad. So we're looking forward to it. We have every school represented in the district, bus drivers, facilities. Yeah, board members. So we're looking forward to another great match, so if you guys can come out.
I volunteer a viva.
Well, great, you have played in the last two, so someone needs to take your space.
Yeah, that's not pretty.
So, yep, so we're looking forward to it, and if you guys can come out. On behalf of the PTSA, we...
Are they going to go to the schools and talk again?
I am going to, on the 25th, we have one of the Wizards that's going to come around, and we're going to just pop around and, no one has signed up.
It was very well received, I was the one in Violet Avenue.
Violet Avenue was the only one last year that did actually have an assembly. No one signed up to do that this time, but, yeah, it was really...
They may not either, but I mean, I was just saying, it was wonderfully done. The young man that did it was just an excellent speaker.
Very encouraging, very, yeah.
He was very good.
Spot on, so we're going to do it again. It's great.
Mhm, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Do we have to get a one-day special insurance coverage for that game?
Yeah, probably, yeah. Old age. Mr. Hughes, welcome back.
I'd like to say it's great to be back. And I just want to thank Therese and Bobby for covering me. They did a great job, although I believe Therese wants me to say she did a terrible job, and she should not be let anywhere near the camera in the future. So that's covered, but I appreciate their help. Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.
Thanks, Steve. And it is, it is nice to see you back, so I'm glad. And with new hardware, huh? Mr. Hughes has bionic hips, right? Titanium, titanium hips, okay. Anybody else? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. So that brings us down to other matters. I don't believe there are any. Board subcommittee reports?
Well, the Health and Welfare Committee met this afternoon. It's been a long afternoon. But again, I was very impressed because we had three eighth graders and one seventh grader come to the Health Committee. And they came and did a presentation looking for more fresh foods into the food services. And they put their whole system together, and they presented it to us. And we were quite impressed with it. So I just wanted to say, Havelin, it came from Havelin, and they were...
Excellent.
And there are some things we want to look at, so we'll take it into heart and from there.
Okay, any other things? I know we had policy, I was giving everybody else a chance here. We had a policy meeting this afternoon, just early, just before the board meeting, exec session. It was very well-attended by all principals, administrators. And the topic, just for general community awareness, was recess detention. And a policy statement that I wished to be put in saying that that was not to be done. We did have a long discussion on that practice. I think we've come to some agreement. We're going to collect some data, we're going to allow it judiciously used for the next month to see how that goes. And I think in all in all, it was a good discussion, and I'm hopeful that the right solution will come out of it. So that's it for policy. Were there any other?
Well, the Audit Committee met last Wednesday reviewing that corrective action plan, which we adopted today.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, we have the next board meeting Thursday, January 28th, 7:00 p.m. at the Havelin Middle School Auditorium. We have no need for an executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Nobody, okay. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, ladies, did great. Gentlemen, ladies, did great.